Mr. David.
Chairman, members of the board, tonight is a important time in all counties' operations when you all's policies and strategies align with resources. And what Glenda Bradley and I are bringing to you tonight is our best attempt at doing that, and it wasn't without some challenges, and those challenges continue on. But I'm confident the plan that we put forward to you tonight certainly meets you all's objectives in alignment as best as we can, and also best, acting on the best available information we have as of tonight. What we're going to do is Glenda and I have rehearsed this once.
Rehearsing again?
And we may be, if I get up and start dancing, you know we've got who was supposed to do what. But we're going to interchange this going through. But I'll start with, and I'll just jump into this, and you can follow along. And I would also suggest for everybody in the audience, you can follow along on the screen. I'm not necessarily going to read all the slides, but I'll maybe just hit the highlight on my portions, and then Glenda will go into more of the deeper dive on the analysis. So with that, we'll go ahead and move into, as you all know, last year I came forward with what I wanted to at least set the table of what are the principles? What are the things that we should, as a board, as elected officials, and I as professional manager, look at guiding and trying to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars? And so with that, I'm pleased to report that this year, the board has adopted some financial policy guidelines. You did that, I think, within the last month or so after some very good work done by Mr. White and Mr. Johnson. And so those are the policies that then inform the budget. Those are the policies that then inform the budget. And so I think I could go to any part of this budget and maybe drill back to where it aligns with the policy, or come as close as we reasonably can. And these are on the county's website, so they're available. The next thing comes into my management principle. And I'll need to backtrack real quick, I'm sorry, the financial philosophy. Let me just state that, because I think that one is very, very important. Orange County will have an appropriately scaled local government services and programs that are funded at levels sufficiently to sufficiently meet the needs and expectations of our citizens and businesses, consistent with the revenues and economic capacity of the county. I think underscore consistent with the revenues and economic capacity of the county. Next, you all are developing strategic plans, you're developing financial policies, and as I said, those are when they're implemented, when the budgets align, the resources align with those plans. The Germana area Wilderness area plan is a prime example of where you all are taking a leadership position in trying to determine a 50-year future, adopting a five-year CIP, really a five and a five, a 10-year CIP. You're setting your plans prospectively in the future. And so I like to work on the operating capital budgets to align with those plans. This is an ever, this is a year-in, year-out kind of process. We're not going to be able to do this in one, two, three, four, five. It's just a 20-year process. One of the things that I clearly look for, all these elements in developing and then implementing, once you all approve it, we still are, as the county staff are charged with implementing those budget decisions to the best of our ability, still, again, being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollar. One of the things that I certainly would like to put forward of these principles is that cost containment, predictability, and avoidance of expenditures are as important as actual savings. Let me repeat that. If we can contain something, predict its increase or decrease, and avoid expenditures, that to me is equal to actually a savings of a year-to-year savings. One of the other things that I think is very important in this board is certainly take a leadership position in wanting to do as good a job as we can, is to make reasonable planned investments in economic development projects. Oftentimes, local governments in Virginia tend to spend, and rightfully so, a lot of time on the expense side. I think there's, a lot of attention needs to be paid as well to the revenue side, and that's not through artificial manipulation of the tax levies to create more revenue. It's actually inducing business investment, creating jobs, growing the economy. No local government is in a steady state. Either a local government, a locality is either growing or contracting. We can look 150 miles south to the southern tier of Virginia, or to southwest Virginia, and see economies in contraction. And so what we try to do is to make a reasonable managed growth, economic growth, one that doesn't overwhelm our ability to provide service. But you have to make the investments to induce that private sector investment. And then also, if and when you do raise taxes, the economists call it the elasticity. How far can you go in pricing something before nobody buys it? I think the same principle has to hold forward in tax policy. There are certain taxes that affect business investment. We don't want to ever put ourselves at a competitive disadvantage to induce business investment here in Orange County. Lastly, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and as recently as the recession that's about to adjourn, is diminishing our tax authority. They're curbing it, they're doing any number of things, and we have to be vigilant on it. But as you know, with our separation of powers and being a Dillon real estate, we are subsets of the state government, and we basically don't have a say in what they do. This year, where we sit now looking forward, there are four things that I want to bring forward that I think are very, very important. Our local tax revenue. Our revenues are stabilizing from the recession, but it's marginal growth for next year. Let me repeat, we're stabilizing, but there's marginal growth. And Glenda will show you the actual numbers. We increased the real estate tax to 84 cents per 100 of assessed values last year, and those were targeted revenues for targeted purposes. Public safety, school personnel compensation, and replacement of general capital equipment. Essentially, you all, the board, prior to my, had made some tough decisions in order to not lay off people and weather the recession, but in doing so, there was a lot of department. I think this budget will show you we're continuing on the right track, that the taxpayers entrusted you with those dollars from last year.
One quick note, Brian.
Yes, sir.
It's 80.4 cents.
Oh, I'm s-
Eighty-four cents.
Both of I-
Wow.
Both of I.
Yeah.
The force for the trees? Sorry. Thank you.
They raised that number over there.
It was 80.4 cents. Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. We were so focused on a whole bunch of other numbers, $120 million budget, but anyhow, let me keep going. Thank you, 80.4 cents. The proposed FY16 budget uses forecasted organic growth. That means revenue growth that is naturally coming in, what we can reasonably project. Also, reprogramming dollars. You can go through a reprogramming process whereby you make a decision to spend $1 one fiscal year, and you may want to trim that back and then reprogram that dollar to another expenditure, and we've done that. But there is no local, any local tax levy is recommended, no increase to any local tax levy is recommended by this budget. Again, it's structurally balanced, meaning we're not redoing one-time revenues, we're not using solely recurring annual revenues to balance ourselves with expenses. The state revenue forecast, I've just read before coming down here that the General Assembly has passed a budget. It's being sent to the governor, and then the governor goes through the veto process, and so it'll be a while to see how we, that shakes out. But based on some information that I received from the Virginia Association of Counties and the Virginia Municipal League, there appears to be some additional funding for Orange County public schools with regard to the standards of quality instructional and support personnel. How much that is, what the match is required, all the stipulations and things, that's something that certainly I and Dr. Tanner and Mr. Benefield and Glenda will be working through, of what does that really mean from the percentages, and what does, what flexibility may come to the schools with that. We're also understanding that there will be compensation funding for state-supported local employees, including those in constitutional offices. Again, the same type of stipulations go. We don't know what type of match is. I do know that it will be September 1st for those state comp board-funded positions, so then you have to annualize that to a 12-month, and what does that shake out to be? The state is actually picking up some of the money they owe on state-responsible local held jail inmates, as you know, and I'll speak to later the jail issues, but that could tweak out a few more dollars. And then I'm glad to report that we will not have to remit a local aid to the state government of $72,000 again next year. The state has absorbed that and will not no longer look to us to do this travesty of where they send state dollars to us, and then we send them back, to cover a $30 million hole in a, I guess, a $25 billion budget. It divides budget. I'm sorry for that editorial. The expenditure focus, as you all know, we've worked very hard this past year to look at our employees' salaries, particularly those that are below the market, particularly in the public safety sector. As you know, the sheriff and his folks and our fire EMS and 911 came to you in November of '13, understanding the competitive disadvantage, the recruitment issues and retention issues they were facing. And then last year, as interim county administrator posed that we budgeted some money at 2% of general county government increase to look at implementing a wage study, as well as some other things. Those studies went through, and you'll see later in the budget, we've done some analysis, and I'm proposing to implement that, plus some targeted position reclassifications, and an annualized salary adjustment for all general government employees of 2% effective July 1st. Just let me be noteful, is that the general county government employees receive no pay raise effective July 1st of last year through today. And so what this does is this moves this into another fiscal year, because then we are able to adequately fund, I guess, budget the adequate funds. Another large focus is group health insurance. As you know, we're self-funded, the schools and general government, and we've had some adverse claims history. Our claims history is only about 16, 18 months old, and so statistically, there's an aberration going on. We don't have enough history in order to right calculate what our self-funding amount will be. We'll speak to more of that as you all get into the detail, but I think we budgeted, we budgeted 10%, and that matches what the school has budgeted as an increase. One of the largest challenges that I had in meeting and preparing this budget was, as you know, a budget or an operating contribution to the Central Virginia Regional Jail that, far as I was aware, became aware of it, and generally speaking, most everybody became materially aware of this in December. We were looking at about a million-dollar increase next year. Our revenues are projected to be only 960 all-in for next year. And so that number has worked itself down to, right now, about $399,000 for next year. This increase is being precipitated by the 200-bed expansion. As you know, in my periodic updates to this board, I'm confident we will be able to get at least Orange County's share, which we are contractually obligated to pay, and this is not a public safety issue. It's not, public safety is not materially affected by these budget decisions. The jail will continue to be well-run and meet its obligation for the sheriff, for the courts, and all other users. But I'm confident we'll be able to, over the next several months, work through into what would be a more reasonable budget contribution for Orange County, as well as our partner jurisdictions, Green, Madison, Fluvan, and Louisa. As you know, sometimes we end up with positions that are needed as additionals, sometimes maybe converting a part-time to a full-time. Also, we have a number of county services provided by external entities. There are a number of nonprofits that either provide human services, quality of life, but services that otherwise the county would make a decision to do on its own or not at all. Historically, we've used these nonprofits to provide services to our county's residents and businesses. One of the other things that I had to focus on was to fill this board's policy objective to maintain the baseline, basically the contribution to our capital project debt service at the amount that was established in your financial policy, and I have accomplished that. Lastly, was to continue the contribution to the Orange County Public Schools of $567,000 for capital equipment repair and maintenance. This is an ongoing thing that I know Dr. Tanner, the school board, and particularly Doug Arnold do a good job of using this money, because running all these buildings and this large physical plant takes ongoing capital dollars. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Glenda to kind of start working through some of these actual numbers.
Okay, this slide shows the historical use of our fund balance in our budgets, and you can see that it's been a while since we adopted a budget without the use of fund balance. Up until 2014, we came very close with a use of only 82,000. Then in 2015, we were able to, for the first time, really have a structurally balanced budget. For 2016, the budget is structurally balanced. However, we are showing the use of fund balance of 1.5 million, and that amount represents the impact of the tax increase from last June. Because we're spring billers, we get unbudgeted revenue in a case like that where we're implementing a tax increase. And the board's new financial policies stipulate that any one-time revenue such as that needs to go to the Capital Projects Fund. So this is showing those monies that were collected on that first half billing being transferred to the Capital Project Fund for future capital project development, and eventually maybe some capital projects themselves. This chart is basically the same information, just in chart form, that you can see in 2014, where the revenues and expenditures come together, then in '15, and then the gap there in '16 again represents that one and a half million that's being transferred to capital. The next one is a history of our local expenses by function, and this includes not only what's spent in the general fund, but also capital. So you can see that the two areas of the largest expenditures are, number one, education, and number two, public safety. And they are also the areas that have seen the most increase in the last few years. That's where our focus has been.
The next slide just shows how this consolidated budget works out. As I said, it's about a $96.5 million budget. Each one of these lines, as you know how a general consolidated budget, there's a lot of slicing and dicing and different ways of looking at that. Some of it is pretty apparent, some of it's a little more cryptic, but I'm confident this budget document, and as you work it through, can get it to the shape that you need to see it. I'm not going to get through any of these, because we'll go in detail later on. Essentially, the budget that is before you all is about a 3.3% increase from last year. One important thing, debt services, as you know, is trending down. All right, the next page, as you all know from last year, this is a spreadsheet that I've developed over a number of years, or at least a template of this, to help you all in your working in this budget. And what this does is this will be a live spreadsheet when you all have your work sessions, so that as you make any changes to the expenditure side, or we talk through maybe a revenue expenditure, dialing it back, dialing it up, we can enter those in real time, and you can materially see where you all are balanced or out of balance. I draw your attention down to the green bars at the bottom right-hand corner. As you all know, last year, we raised taxes, and there were an 8.4 cent in that column. You can see that the budget is balanced at zero, zero in those columns. I do add just one, I guess, footnote. It does show a surplus of about $17,000. We're still, you know, working through and analyzing our compensation proposal, and we made an adjustment which resulted in a $17,000 adjustment. We were balanced until within the last 36 hours, we made that adjustment. And we can go explain more of that as we get into your work sessions, but that money's there and available, and certainly can be used for anything the board sees fit. The next document is also a real-life spreadsheet that we will have during your work session. And before I, and I'm not going to go through every line item, though I do want to hit a couple highlights, is that in the package that you've received, and I think we're going to get all this posted on the website, I've taken an opportunity to produce a narrative that's right here, that goes line by line of this document, and sets forth in a narrative way my rationale for recommending what I did. And I think oftentimes, the numbers are the numbers, and we need to be very mindful of working through how all this works. But I also think it's equally important to be able to give the narrative, to explain the decisions that I made in recommending this budget behind that. Let me hit a couple of high points as I go through this, and certainly with the school board here, and the school superintendent, and others interested in the school. This was a very difficult decision for me to make. Frankly, I wish there was better flexibility in this budget, but this budget is pretty tight, if I can use that type of adverb. Flexibility, given everything we had, only allowed me to recommend that the health and dental insurance increase be funded. There were, and you'll see later, a lot of very worthy projects that I think the school board and Dr. Tanner put forward, some of them not much money, maybe 10, 15, 20,000 dollars that had a high return. And in better days, in better times, I certainly would have given it a very favorable consideration, but I just could not find the daylight to be able to do that this time around. And I, you know, not to throw the jail back up, but that's a $400,000 amount of money that we had to work through. If it not worked for the jail, then absolutely I could see some flexibility. And I'm not, this is not to pit the jail against the schools and things, these are very vitally necessary things that we are obligated, absolutely obligated, to do. But because of this situation, there's not much flexibility that I had to give anything beyond the health insurance. Numbers of, any other type of numbers in here, you can go through and look at the thing, and I encourage everybody to do so. The other big numbers, the implementation of the compensation study as revised, position reclassifications, and salary adjustment, that's a $409,000 additional money. Again, recurring revenues, not one time. So between those two, I'm pretty much used up about the 900 and some odd thousand dollars we had in new revenue. The last is the group health insurance. It's 462 for the schools, it's 132 for us. That's at a 10% increase. We feel pretty good about that budget number right now. If we're able to shave that back, then absolutely I think that money would be available for this board to reprogram. Next slide. There are a number of external entities that I'm actually recommending some additional dollars for, because I think some of the services that they could provide, or at least potentially provide, could be a savings to us in a lot. And I point to the offender Jeffersonary Community Correction Program. This county has not historically funded a, I forget what, it's a planner-coordinated position with probation. That position is funded by Fluvan, Louisa, Green, others in this judicial circuit. The purpose of that position is to keep people from being in pre-trial sentence, pre-trial detention, not having them in the jail. And since we're very sensitive to our cost for the jail, I figured at $7,700, if we could just save a few days incarceration for at least pre-trial offenders, then that could be a positive. The next is that we have made some adjustments to the Comprehensive Services Act. Essentially, we have, weren't properly calculating the Medicaid holdback, and we've done that. That did cost us $150,000. But Glenda and I are very confident going forward now with CSA, we're going to be in a very, very, I guess, appropriate position as far as managing that, which is about a $2 million program here in the county. Last, as you can see, the Capital Improvements Project Fund will realize what the baseline that the board had appropriated, the schools, the 567. And lastly, we are putting the 163 towards the closure of the landfill. The other thing I would add is that in the capital budget heretofore had been about $100,000 each year put towards our reassessment. Glenda and I are proposing to you all, and we have done this in the proposed budget, that's actually a reserve fund, should be in the operating expenses, and we've put the $100,000 as the next installment for the reassessment in the next four years. Debt services in there, and you can see, if you remember, you all approved that, the schools approved the VPSA bond refinancing, so that was some additional dollars coming in the door. Next slide is a slide that I had asked Dr. Tanner and Mr. Benefield to present, prepare. This is similar to a slide that Dr. Grimacy and I had talked about last year. One of the things with school funding is, those folks know exactly where all the streams of revenue, somebody like me, having limited attention span and understanding of these things, just kind of parse this out to where it shows what the local amount is to leverage, if it leverages other sources of funds, or if it's a standalone for local, and that's what this chart does. And it takes those priorities that they had previously communicated to you, and breaks it down that way. Next, I'll let, I think, pitching it back to you then.
Okay. We're going to start with the general fund, since it's the largest fund of the county. And this is just a comparison of the past four years, including the proposed budget, showing the total general fund budget and the change from year to year. So again, you can see the proposed '16 budget is up by 1.8 million or 3.3%. Looking specifically at general fund revenues, we'll start with property taxes. And this is a look at our real estate values by class, just a comparison between what our real estate base looked like in 2005 versus what it looks like in 2015. And of course, the 2015 is an estimate based on the most current year. But you can see that residential, single-family suburban in 2005 made up 65% of the tax base. It now makes up only 62% of the tax base, or the values. You can also see that there's been improvement in the commercial category. The purple slice there has gone from 6% to 7%. However, the other largest change was in agricultural, from 10% to 12%. So that was the values. Now, if you look at the change in our tax levy, and looking at the different categories, and who is bearing the burden of the tax levy, you can see that residential in 2005 was carrying 76% of the total tax levy. In 2015, they're estimated to carry 78%. Again, you see the commercial going from 7% to 8%, and the agricultural has fallen from 17% to 14%. So these are just interesting, you know, changes in the dynamic of our tax base.
When, we're looking at 10 years there, in terms of the drop in agricultural.
Mm-hmm.
How much of that is, I mean, and some of this is due to the fact that some of the agricultural land has been shifted to residential? And that, is that a part of it? And how much of it is just?
That could be, that could be a part of it. I think the movement of some of the land into the land use program-
Land use and easements?
-also definitely plays a role. And that's why the- And that's why the, the next charts here just are a look at what our land use deferments have been since two thousand and five. And you can see that as a dollar amount, they've grown quite a bit. But if you look at it, you know, as a percent of the levy, it's fairly stable throughout that time period. The next slide shows the percentage of residential real estate revenue to the consolidated budget. And this was a ratio that we talked about in developing the, the board's financial policies. And it's interesting to see, it's just a benchmark that we can follow to see, again, how much of our consolidated budget does residential real estate have to fund? So you can see that from two thousand and six to what we've estimated for two thousand and sixteen, we've gone from somewhere around seventeen percent up to about twenty-three percent. So, and there is at that one year that's a little bit of an aberration, two thousand and nine. That year, there was the school construction, the middle school construction that was included in the consolidated budget. So it really skewed the numbers.
This, this slide was something Mr. White had asked us in, in to build in the financial policy. So when we get into a discussion of what residential real estate actually contributes toward the tax base, the other seventy-five percent or so is commercial, industrial, you know, open, open lands, undeveloped lands and so.
Well, another revenue from the state for the, the economy, sales tax.
Thank you, I, I meant their consumer taxes as a percentage of the entire budget.
This next slide just shows you the funds that are generated by one penny of the tax rate. I'm comparing the estimated values for two thousand and fifteen to the two thousand and seven values, mainly because that is prior to the assessment where the values fell. So you can see that we still have not recovered in real estate values because in two thousand and seven, a penny would generate four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, where we were estimating for two thousand and sixteen to only get three hundred and sixty-five. Most of the other categories have seen a little bit of growth, or they've remained fairly stable. Or like in the case of machinery and tools, depreciation comes into play. So that, you know, tends to skew the numbers from year to year. The next slide is just a list of the tax rates and showing that no tax rate increases are proposed at all. Everything is set to remain the same. This slide shows the revenue that we've estimated would be generated by those rates. Real estate is by far the largest at twenty-eight point four million, followed by personal property at six point four million. This slide is just a reconciliation to show you how we got from the budget balancer total change in general fund revenue, which was nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, to the total change in general fund revenue as proposed by the county administrator. So, once we got through the departmental request, we added the transfer of the unbudgeted revenue from last June of one and a half million dollars. That isn't truly revenue, but, you know, if you look at the total revenues on a printout, you will see it included. The reend, the reduction to the CSA reimbursements by five hundred and fifty-one thousand. Most of that has a corresponding reduction on the expenditure side, but we did end up a net deficit of about a hundred and forty-eight thousand. We also reduced user fees for a childcare center director that the Office on Youth Director had requested for two childcare center directors to go from part-time to full-time. And just looking at the fees and the history there, we felt like it was realistic to think that all three together could support one going to full-time, but not quite two. So we had to pull back on the fees there, and that's what that thirty-one thousand is. So in the county administrator's proposed budget, the total change in general fund revenue is one point eight million. And this just shows you by category where those increases and decreases are. Local revenues up by nine hundred and fifty thousand, state revenue going down by six hundred and twenty-eight. But that's where that CSA reimbursement true up is. Federal revenue, that's just the payment in lieu, and that was down last year, so we had to lower that estimate. You'll see there that the subtotal of actual revenues in the general fund, when you net all that, is only up by three hundred and eighteen thousand or point six percent. Then we have our transfers in.
Glenda, I'm sorry. I'm sure there's a real good answer, and I'll feel silly once you tell me what it is. But what is the difference between page twenty-nine, the estimated tax revenue is thirty-seven eight sixty-nine? And then you have the, the, the local revenue here is forty-nine. What is the twelve million, where's, where does that come from?
There are other local revenues, like other local taxes that include sales tax and recreation tax and food and beverage, occupancy tax. There, there are several categories, and I might have a slide that might show you more detail on that, that shows all the categories that make up local. But actually, on the printouts, it's everything from the first one, which starts with real estate all the way down to, like, I think it's recovered cost or miscellaneous revenue. And then it starts with the state. I did want to point out on this slide that like a two thousand percent increase in the transfers in. And what that is, is we budgeted twenty-six thousand dollars to be transferred from the capital project fund to the general fund for the Board of Equalization, because they'll need to be doing their work next year. And then the reserves of one point five, again, that's the unbudgeted revenue from fiscal fourteen. So this slide just shows our general fund revenue sources by percentage. And you can see that property taxes make up almost seventy percent of the general fund revenues. And this slide, you can see Mr. Johnson, the other local taxes at ten percent and other local revenue, which are some miscellaneous things, at seven. So that's another twelve million or so. Here, here's where you'll be able to see it. This just shows a little bit more of a breakdown on the general fund revenues. And you can see that some categories are up, some are down. Real est, the real estate billing itself didn't do as well as I had estimated this year, so I'll pull that back a little. The personal property levy did better than expected, so that one has gone up quite a bit. The other local taxes category showing an increase of two hundred and four thousand. That one includes the sales and use tax that the county will now be able to keep that was being sent to the towns. So that's included in that.
In which line?
The two hundred and four thousand other local taxes.
Okay.
Looking on down that list, the other local revenue stops. The last category in the list that's local is that recovered cost. So the noncategorical aid is state aid. And that includes things like the PPTR reimbursement and the communication sales and use tax, it's also in that category. And that one has gone, it's not doing, it's not performing in line with our budget estimates for this year. So that's why you see a decrease there. And state revenue, again, you can see where the CSA adjustment was made. But again, including that transfer of one and a half million to the capital projects fund, we're up by three, three point three percent. These are the major areas of increases in general fund revenue, with the largest one being personal property tax. Other local taxes, that category increased by the two hundred and four. And then you've got machinery and tools. Some of the other categories of property tax, real estate, shared expenses, that's the, the reimbursements that we receive for the constitutional officers and their offices. Building permits up by a little bit, and other charges for service also up.
And on the personal property tax number, the four twenty-three, is that, is that gonna be a recurring number? Or is some portion of that not recurring?
Some portion of that, well, I would think the total is recurring, but the, the difference looks so large because I'm making up for the fact that it exceeded my estimate this year. And then I'm estimating a one percent increase on that for next year.
On page thirty-three, real estate adopted for two fifteen, that's an extra three in that figure.
Oh, there sure is, sure is, thank you.
The comma doesn't shift right, so it's not two hundred and ninety-three.
Too bad.
I knew she was good.
That's it?
I said, I knew she was good, fellas, I couldn't keep her.
So we've gone through the increases. And these are the decreases in general fund revenues, with the largest being that CSA adjustment, the communication sales and use tax, and some other little ones totaling seven hundred and fifty-two thousand. So when you put that all together, again, between the increases and the decreases, we come up with a net three hundred and eighteen thousand in true general fund revenue. Then we have our transfers in and our use of fund balance. This next slide shows state and federal revenues. And just over time, what they've been doing. You can see that the compensation board has increased at a fairly conservative rate over the years. Communication sales and use tax, you can see that my estimate for two thousand and fifteen, I have pulled that back for two thousand and sixteen, because I just don't think we're getting there. And the Comprehensive Services Act, that's the CSA. Those expenditures and reimbursements can be very volatile. We don't really know what they'll be. But as you can see during, for thirteen and fourteen, our actuals have been more in the eight hundred thousand dollar range. Therefore, our adjustment back to this nine hundred and ninety-one for the budgeting purposes for sixteen. Personal property tax relief stays constant. That's just a, been a flat amount for a number of years now from the state.
Yeah. You have to wonder how long it's gonna stay flat.
It certainly isn't.
And I don't mean it's gonna start increasing either.
Only try, just trying to phase it out as a way of saving money.
You can see our other state, which includes grants. And, you know, that tends to make it fluctuate quite a bit. And the federal, you know, I, I'm sure those were probably grants received in two thousand and nine and ten. But typically, there's not a lot of revenue that we're receiving from the federal government.
What were the big sources in two thousand and nine and ten?
I, I would really have to look it up to tell you for sure, but I'm thinking they're grants of some sort.
Think we had some.
It used to be some public safety.
Oh, yeah, would've been airport, that's where we get.
Airport, public safety.
We also got some, didn't we get some federal grants for some EMS, EMS workers or something? There was a, we got.
Yeah, it was one of these things, they boosted it up as long as we hired them and then we had to keep them.
Yeah, yeah, one of those.
There was the Recovery and Reinvestment Act, FY under stimulus dollars.
That's the, that's one of those, that's one of those grants you gotta look at carefully. We'll give you this for two years, but you gotta pay for it forever.
Yeah.
All right, that's just, just the chart that is charting that same information. And the chart kind of makes you see the, the spike in two thousand and fourteen in other state revenue. And that's really the five hundred and forty thousand dollars that we received from the Governor's Opportunity Fund for the green applications incentive. So we're gonna focus on general fund expenditures, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Glenda. Here are the, the details of something that I spoke to earlier, particularly the focus on compensation for general fund government employees. This is the dollar value, the computed market adjustments, the targeted position reclassification. Those are five positions, only five. And then a two percent annual wage increase for all full-time general government employees, a two percent annual wage increase for part-time hourly employees. That's where the four hundred and nine thousand dollars comes from. And I'm proposing this be effective July first. Our health insurance, and then the four hundred and, and five hundred and four thousand, these are requested, as you know and you'll see, I did not propose this.
Those are the ones, that's five hundred and four requested, not given.
Well, it's, that's the total requested. Now, what I approved is.
Oh, okay, so the, the requ, the, what you approved is, is less that.
What I've recommended to you all for approval.
Recommend.
Be, be, be real careful of how I said that, because I propose you dispose.
All right.
And then last, the overtime for court services and law enforcement. As you know, that's a perennial thing that we just need to manage. Here is the budget that was put forward. The initial one we received in December was the largest one. This is part of the, I guess, the frustration, is that the superintendent put out another budget on February sixth. That was the budget that we had, we, the train was getting ready to leave the station on this proposed budget, and that was the one that was used. We now have what the jail authority approved for distribution to the local governments, that's about seventy-some thousand dollars more than what we loaded into the budget, about seventy-two thousand dollars more. They, the, the budget the authority used doubles the use of their fund balance, goes north of two million dollars. This one had a million dollar use. As you all know, we're, we're working through that. I'm confident, Glenda and I are confident, that we will be able to work through that additional seventeen thousand dollars if, in fact, the authority's approved budget for distribution holds today. They could adopt this at their March twelfth meeting, but as you know, budgets can be amended even after the fiscal year has started. And our first quarter, we dispersed money, I think, by quarter there, so, you know, we, we've got, we're, we're working on it. Here was the narrative of the school board's requests of, as you saw that earlier chart, this is the, the overview of, of those. I think Dr. Tanner did a good job in her presentation to you all explaining the rationale and, and, and the basis for these, these requests. These are the constitutional. As you all know, there are what are called locally supported or state-supported local offices. The only point from this slide that I make is that the state reimbursed us one point nine million dollars. And a lot of this is personnel for the sheriff's office. It actually takes to meet our level of service five point four million dollars. So it's, it's really, you can see how the partnership works between the state and local governments in this slide. Yes, let me pitch it over to you.
This next one just shows a pie chart of the general fund expenditures proposed for FY sixteen. The main things I would. The main things I would like you to notice are the, the percentage of the budget that represents education and public safety, because this is another one where you can really see where the majority of the dollars go to those two categories, and then debt service would be next. This next one is just comparing the adopted two thousand and fifteen budget to the two thousand and sixteen proposed by sub-function. And you can see, we've got some categories that are up, some that are down. One of the things at play here is the fact that for two thousand and fifteen, we did have two percent built in for salary increases that was spread across departments. That has not been implemented, but in comparison, two thousand and sixteen has the entire four hundred and nine thousand shown there in the general and financial administration category, because we just put it as a placeholder pending the board's approval. So, that's something to keep in mind when you're looking at this. Further down, you see welfare and social services, the reduction of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, and that includes the offset to that CSA revenue reimbursement reduction. So the expenditures are also being reduced. Again, you're coming down to the same total, the one point eight million increase and a three point three percent increase.
And the schools are in the transfers to other funds, I assume?
That's right. And that's exactly what we would go to next, if you notice that on that chart, the very next to the last line, the transfers to other funds, is by far the largest line in the general fund. And this is the detail of those transfers, the largest being to the schools, and again, you see it's up by four hundred and sixty-two thousand. Social services transfer there is down, based on their request. To the Capital Projects Fund, you see it's up by one point, almost eight million dollars. That includes the one point five in the unbudgeted revenue. The debt service fund has gone down by sixty-eight thousand four hundred and eleven. Airport Fund and Landfill Fund, both down also. And this just charts out those transfers. Tried to put the three on one slide that are the largest of the transfers to the school operating, the debt service, and the landfill, so you can see the trend over time. And then this is to the Social Services Fund, the Capital Project Fund, and to the Airport Fund. And you can see, the Capital Project Fund shows the spike of this infusion of the one, one and a half million. Again, just pointing out the two largest changes in the general fund transfers out being to the schools and to the Capital Projects. This is just a review of the current year's budget for school funding. We had about twenty point two million approved for operating and five hundred and sixty-seven for capital. We did have some carryforwards this year for operating and capital, bringing our total appropriations to twenty-two point six million. So for FY sixteen, the request was for twenty-one point five for operating, which was an increase of one point three. The request was five hundred and sixty-seven again for the capital. We were able to fund that on the operating, the recommendation was for an increase of the four hundred and sixty-two. And this is just a chart to give you an idea, the required local effort is the first column there, and then the actual local contribution is in the second column. And you can see what the county is contributing compared to the required local effort, which is, just gives you an idea of what, you know, the how much they need to adjust the SOQ, because we're almost double at this point what the required is.
If you remember, I distributed, just a couple meetings ago, the Department of Education's analysis of the, all of the jurisdictions funding above SOQ. In fact, they paid particular attention to those localities that were doubled, a hundred percent above SOQ. Based on this budget, we are probably now in that, in that group. All right, I'll take it over here, as I said earlier, we have historically funded external entities. Many of these entities get by and do what they do for our county. Quality of life, like the museum, or human social services, or human services, like Boys and Girls Club, planning district commission, transportation, unit-wise and such. Most of those requesting no funding change, but there are some that, that did, and I certainly have provided the, the explanation. And the ones that are listed here are the ones that I've given the explanation for, and my narrative, but I won't go through them. And as I met with you all one-on-one, I gave you the rationale, but that's also listed in there. Let me just, one last thing I'll say on these new or increased contributions. These were seen trying to, remember, my cost avoidance is that for these dollars may avoid some additional dollars, like with the homelessness and Comprehensive Service Act. There could be a correlation between this dollar investment and avoidance of Comprehensive Services Act funding. Here is the entire list of, we have what total dollars do you have? On your, one of the spreadsheets, the, the balancer, not the balance, but the next spreadsheet only has those that are requesting the increase above what they got this year. So, those that request no increase, this is the only place that you'll, you'll see. We talked about the jails, Lake of the Woods, as you know, helped fund improvements to the the solid waste collection site, facility out there, that is not repeated. Speaking of juvenile detention, it's a three-year average, so we've actually had more detention days over the last three years, so it's going up about twenty thousand dollars. Culpeper Soil and Water, those are actually services rendered to our Department of Planning and Zoning staff. So this is a true, they kind of look back and then say, okay, what the next year's based on? And they review our erosion center control and stormwater management plans. The Health Department's got some moving pieces and parts, Dr. Davis has done a good job, I think, managing her budget, maybe getting additional grants in, so it's actually going down. However, she did, responsive to this board's interest in, perhaps managing chronic diabetes for the county, proposed a halftime locally funded, funded with another half from state funds. While that was responsive to this board's interest and would certainly meet a, a public health need in the county, this budget was, was, just, just couldn't, couldn't get there with this budget. As you can see, there, there were over six hundred thousand dollars that were not included. Here's a, another way, voluntary, maybe another way you'd call it discretionary. But again, if you kind of frame this in services that the county would otherwise provide on its own and not, not provide. And these are contractual, these are the ones that, they're outside agencies that were contracted to pay for, and that's usually to get into the cost predictability mode. Oh, I keep going, okay, thank you. I've spoken to these other insurance, I won't go through them, they're pretty self-explanatory of what I've done. Let me just say that these two percent annual salary adjustments does not apply to the board supervisors, constitutional officers, they're under agreements for their staff, but not the constitutional officers themselves, nor for contracted employees, including myself and the county attorney. So the two percent doesn't apply to that group of folks. Next is just how the, the requesting proposed positions work themselves through the personnel complement. And here's the, the net. And this were requested, these were requested. Here's a, another way of looking at these, these positions, and these are all repeated on those earlier working spreadsheets that you all used to balance the budget. And here's how this works itself through, for example, the communist attorney, this is a part-time position that I'm proposing going to full-time at the request of the communist attorney. It's be one full-time administrative and a senior to support four attorneys.
You had mentioned in our discussion that there's been a substantial increase in their caseload. Is there a chance just to get some sort of a, an indication of what it is, in other words, you?
Yes, sir, in, in, in your package, behind the narrative of everything that I've proposed is the actual, I guess, backup documentation, so that Ms. Wheeler has what her, her basis or justification for that position is. So, as you go through, it's the narrative that I've written, and then the corresponding. Now, not all the, the narrative may have some backup, because I've contained it in the narrative, but that position's definitely in there. Here's the courthouse deputy to show what, what that does to the overall personnel complement. Office on Youth, you know, we have the part-time shared position between Office on Youth, Parks and Recreation, and Tourism, those three functions share one suite, so this part-time position would be a front counter, telephoning, a reception, a public reception position. And I'll let you do the Airport Fund. We're getting close to the end, so.
In the Airport Fund, there aren't any big changes really, but there was a small increase in operational expenses that was due to costs associated with new stormwater monitoring regulations. The decrease in capital expenditures is due to a delay in our project schedule, which was caused by the requirement for an environmental assessment, which is currently underway. These are just a few airport updates that we thought you might be interested in. The profit from fuel sales for fourteen was up seventy-two thousand dollars. Well, it was, it was seventy-two thousand dollars, up three percent from FY thirteen. Although we sold fewer gallons, the profit was higher because of the higher fuel prices. And the average margin per gallon on Jet A and the AvGas was almost twenty-one percent. Fuel sales were projected in the FY sixteen budget at the current budgeted levels. Thirty-eight planes are currently based at the airport, which is the same as last year, but there was some turnover. We gained three new ones, but we also lost three, so we're at the same thirty-eight. We are continuing to compete with adjacent local airports that are building additional hangars. However, we do have waiting lists, we have thirty planes on a waiting list for old hangars, and nineteen planes on a waiting list for the new hangars. And the area of Capital Projects.
Are these, are these planes not currently, those on the waiting list, not currently at the airport?
They're housed elsewhere.
Well, I'm just saying, I got forty-nine on, I got thirty-eight plants, planes here, and I got forty-nine on the waiting list.
People want hangars, they don't want to store the planes outside.
I got more people on the waiting list than I have planes?
Yes, sir, let me, let me.
The planes, that, we're at capacity at this point, right?
Yeah, I understand.
We've got thirty-eight hangars, apparently.
We have programmed the CIP investment, which will be locally funded, additional T-hangers. This is an enterprise fund, so.
That's not the, if I've got thirty-eight planes currently airport, are they all based in hangars?
There's maybe six.
Yeah, there's a handful outside, but not. Okay, all right, and the thirty planes that are on the waiting list?
A lot of them are coming from Charlottesville.
Okay, these are planes not currently housed here, that's the question I have.
And if we had the hangars, they would move here.
Okay, got it, got it.
Because they're taking federal aviation away.
I was just thought, people were here outside, wait, on a waiting list to get in the hangar, and I got more on the waiting list than I actually have here, that didn't make sense. Okay.
Let me, just, one, one thing for the board to consider, and I think, correct me if I get my numbers right. The airport pays for about eighty cents on the dollar, the expenses through hangars, through fuel sales. The general fund subsidizes about twenty percent, so twenty cents, eighty cents on the dollar. I would certainly submit that the economic activity generated by the airport certainly makes up that additional twenty cents in tax revenues that come in, particularly the Skydive Orange, and other, other things, the, the school that's out there. So, one of the things the board may want to consider, not now, but going forward, is looking at the economic impact of the airport, and seeing if there might be some strategic investments to get hangars in here, maybe dropping the tax on airports, about twenty thousand dollars for next year. Some of the, I think Stafford has dropped it to zero, Culpeper has dropped it to zeros, and inducement of bringing in airplanes to operate out of here that then create the economic impact.
Lady Louisa just dropped theirs to zero.
So during the past year, we have completed the Eastman acquisition and obstruction removal for phase two. And as I said before, the environmental assessment is underway.
And one of the things that you don't have on that is Shannon Airport has been bought by somebody new, and they are undercutting everybody on fuel substantially, so that you'll see the fuel sales off next quarter.
Moving on to the Landfill Fund, you can see that operations there are down, and our contribution capital is also down for the year, so the total fund is down by twelve point thirty-three percent. These are the significant changes that have caused that. One is the landfill has found new technology to use for the leachate management, and that has resulted in a savings of ninety-eight thousand five hundred dollars for the upcoming budget.
Which is the charges we paid to the town to dispose of the leachate in this Versuitch Street plant.
For the capital outlay, we had been budgeting for the construction of additional cells in the future. We had also been budgeting amounts for equipment replacement, and with the new CIP, those things are planned to be debt-financed when they're needed. So, the, the only project that we're funding for capital as far as a reserve is for the closure itself of the existing, the, the new cell.
When we talk about the continuing monitoring after closure, that's, is that in operations? Okay.
And in order to improve, improve the efficiency and streamline some of our daily activities, expenses for all of the solid waste collection sites have been combined into one cost center. The Public Works Director came to us and said that they were really having difficulties with things like coding payroll timesheets and small invoices that had to be split among all the collection sites, and that he really felt that the, the benefits as far as efficiency of combining those would outweigh the the, the idea that we wouldn't have that information at the ready. He says he can still produce that information if it's needed by sight, but this would really streamline things for some of his staff. streamline things for some of his staff. So that is, has been included that way in this budget. These are just some landfill updates. They completed the construction phase for the, the closure of the old landfill permit ninety. They've submitted the closure quality assurance documents to DEQ, and they're waiting their approval. And right now, as you know, we have a, we're soliciting for a contract for landfill scale And I have a section here on the self-insurance fund. We haven't really been able to do much reporting on that so far, but I wanted to offer a little background that due to the increase in the cost of health insurance, the three boards, the Board of Supervisors, Social Services Board, and the School Board approved the transition to a self-insured plan for the plan year that started in October of two thousand thirteen. And Digital Benefits Advisors had estimated that the county could save five hundred and twelve thousand dollars in the first year if a hundred percent of their claim forecast was actually incurred, and that claim, actual claims would need to exceed a hundred and ten percent of the forecast to exceed the cost of the traditional insurance plan based on the quotes that we got that year. So the other thing is if we had less than a hundred percent of the claims, that savings would then accumulate in the self-insurance fund in order to offset the need for future rate increases. So at the end of FY fourteen, we were nine months into the plan year since it started in October, and the fund had one point nine million dollars in cash at that time, of which eight hundred and thirty-three thousand was unassigned and unrestricted. We had to come up with an estimate for incurred but not reported claims, and that estimate was four hundred and ninety-two thousand at the end of June. For the first six months of FY fifteen, we began to see much higher dollars amounts in claims, and those amounts are higher than what Digital Benefits Advisors considers typical for a group of our size, which is about eight hundred and ninety-six insured employees. But they expect to see our group's claims begin to fall back down to more typical levels in the next few months, just because, you know, that's the statistical nature of the beast. Our most recent insurance invoice reflects that total claims are down to three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars for that month compared to an average for the first six months of five hundred and eighty-six thousand. And just to give you, you know, an idea of where that aligns with our budget, our budget number was based on four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per month. So due to these high claims and the fact that we don't have years of experience to really help us get a true idea of how fast our claims will come back down, we have built into this budget an increase of ten percent, and we believe that we can get there. We believe that we would have to do some modifications to the plan. For instance, we have a plan now that has a five hundred dollar, we actually have a plan now that has no deductible, and we may need to have a deductible of five hundred By making some changes like that, we may be able to, you know, keep the increase down to ten percent if our claims continue to be high, or perhaps even do better. But at the end of February, the fund had just over two million in cash and had an estimated unrestricted fund balance of eight hundred and ten thousand. So, you know, we're, we're kind of holding our own, but, you know, this has been a rough six months as far as claims goes. So for the next steps, Digital Benefits Advisors is in the process of obtaining proposals for the administration of the plan, and we are hopeful that with some additional months of experience and those strategic plan modifications, the budgeted rate of increase will be enough and that it may be even be adjusted downward. The board won't need to take action on those actual contributions until probably June after we give in the proposals for the administration of the plan, and by then we'll have a little better id- idea of where our claims experience is going. But the chart at the bottom here just is to give you an idea of our total medical insurance budget and how it breaks down between administration and claims for the three entities.
In the detail that you had given us yesterday, I tried to track some of that through, and it looked like the year-over-year additional contribution to this fund was on the order of one point three million, which is about twenty percent. And big chunks of that seem to be a bogey for dental. Is there something going on with the dental or how we, how we budgeted the dental piece? Because it was, it's like a half a million dollars.
I will say that the budget for the current year, I mean, we're sort of in a state of flux as far as getting our budgets shifted around to the right places, and I'm not, were you comparing it to the current year or the previous year? Because.
Fifteen.
Yeah. One, one of the things is that the one year only really has nine months in it, and then this year is the.
Well, it, 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 the ten percent looked like it turned into twenty, and I, we need to, I just need to sort of get my head around that a little bit.
Um.
I mean, we don't have to do it now, I just.
Yeah. Another factor I'll just say is that we have had an increase in participation. Like, there are about twenty more employees on our plan than there were the last, you know, last year when they were doing their estimates. And we think that the Affordable Care Act has, you know, had some impact on that, that people who can no longer get insurance through their spouse's employment are now having to come to our plan that wouldn't have before. And there, there are just some things like that that have been going on that are also, I think, you know, feeding into that increase.
Well, I mean, it, it looked like the year-over-year number is a very large number. I mean, you know.
Right.
Three and a half cents on the, on the tax rate, just to cover that, because if it's, if it truly is one point three billion.
Well, and also the other thing to keep in mind is on the expend, if you're looking at the actual self-insurance fund and you're looking at the expenditures, that includes the employee's expense as well. So that's not just the county's expense, it's all the employee contributions coming in there as well.
All right. Yes. Slide eighty-two here. Moving into CIP, and if you all remember, we recommended and you all agreed to separate the five-year CIP process from, from the operating budget, the regular annual budget process, which we did. Reasons were, and, and, you know, won't go through those, but we've done that. What you have before you is year one of that five-year CIP that would be part of next year's budget. I've touched on some of this. Everything aligns up with what policy you all had established. You adopted the CIP back, the five-year CIP in December second, and there's one, it's spoken to, the unbudgeted revenue being transferred in the fund. This capital project fund also sets up a five hundred thousand dollar project design, project, I guess, development line. This would be for design, engineering, and other preliminary project development expenses that could be reimbursable in debt. And as you all know, if you adopt a reimbursement resolution for any of these projects, particularly the ones that are debt, that'll be cer- that issue for, then you can spend out of this line to get cost estimates, to get preliminary scopes and schedules, all those things that will better fine in tune what you would need to ultimately borrow. Once you do that financing, then you would be able to replenish this fund or not from that financing, but it gives you a amount of money there that is essentially helps you start working through particularly these larger projects. I, I would say that that fund would probably be first used for the public safety radio system. We've got some preliminary design money already, already budgeted, and we're spending that, but as we get more into this, it'll certainly get additional dollars being needed to design.
Was that the only change from the adopted CIP?
Yes.
The only one I just spotted as I was going through it.
I'm being bold, but I'm pretty sure that that was the only.
Yes, except for the reassessment money being moved.
Moved out. And, and the, and the twenty-six. The ninety-nine and the twenty-six were both moved out, but then the, the new five hundred placeholder.
Came in because, it came in because of the unbudgeted revenue being moved in. Here's another way of, of looking at this. One thing that you all know is that it's not just general fund dollars that fund some of these capital projects. Public safety, there are grants that come in for a lot of their equipment, the fire EMS. Federal is typically the airport, so this is the spread of how these projects are there. The donations, I forget which one project, but I think that there's a four-wheeler, a gator in, in the fire EMS, but that would be looked at at a donation from a private company to fund that, that would be paid by the capital projects fund. And here are the listing of the capital projects, and then this is taken from year one of the CIP. CIP is a planning document. This is the capital projects budget for next year, which actually would appropriate monies to, to these projects. And we, these, all these projects, the, the project number is, is in there, and then it corresponds with, the adopted budget that was adopted, CIP.
This, this slide is just showing you the historical general fund, capital fund, and you can see that there, there's been a great deal of fluctuation in what we can do every year as far as capital funding. So, you know, part of our change in, in our CIP process was to, and, and with the tax increase last year, was to establish a stream of revenue that we could direct to the CIP in keeping up with our replacement of equipment and those type of things. So for the two thousand sixteen budget year, you see the two point seven budgeted there, and five hundred of that is part of the one and a half million dollars for this project development line that Brian was just telling you about.
As, as the years go by, you all had established twenty fifteen, FY twenty fifteen, as the baseline, so I would say as the years march forward, that two point one, two point two four should stay steady, and then that's what we budget against for all your equipment replacement. You shouldn't see this fluctuation, should be on a routine basis.
You're, you're footing it on page eighty-eight there, the, the million oh thirty-nine, is that the difference between the?
Five hundred and the one and a half.
And the one and a half, okay.
So we're not, we've budgeted for the one and a half to leave the general fund, but in the capital project fund, we're only budgeting half a million for this project development line. The rest will be unappropriated, it'll be in the fund balance within the capital fund, available for, you know, these needs as they begin to.
Or one of the things I think we discussed is if we get to a financing, and it's just, you know, how much money, you want to put more cash down to lessen borrowing costs, there's a lot of strategic things that you can do with these funds, but it's there, it's endowed essentially with trust.
But really, none of it is committed to a project specific at this point.
The only that's committed is the two point two.
Right.
Now we're into the debt service, and this chart just shows you the outstanding debt by entity and how that's going to be paid off over the next few years. It does include the two financings for the phone system and the energy performance projects that the schools did and they pay for out of their operations. This is the annual debt service payments by entity and how they change over the years. And it also includes those two payments. This one focuses on the debt service fund that's included in your proposed budget, and it's comparing the current year's budget to the FY sixteen proposed budget. Both of these years actually include new debt for the purchase of ambulances, two in fifteen and two again in sixteen. The increase for sixteen is actually, well, on the county side, is a hundred and fifteen thousand. Then when you look at the decrease in the schools' debt within the debt service fund of a hundred and eighty-four, the net change, and this does include the, the savings from the bond refunding, is a net of sixty-eight thousand four hundred and eleven. So where does all this leave us as far as our fund balance and fiscal stability reserve? This is just straight out of the fund balance policy, and again, says why you need a fund balance, to meet annual cash flow fluctuations, to absorb and adjust to unexpected revenue declines, and to meet unanticipated expenditure demands. This is a, a chart showing the historical levels of our total general fund balance. This isn't the balance of the unreserved, but it's the total general fund balance. And again, when we're looking at fund balance, I think it's always helpful to look at cash at the same time, because even though they're not the same thing, they're very closely And this will show you the status of our general fund balance and how it relates to this one and a half million that we're proposing be transferred over to the capital project. You can see what our FY fifteen amended budget is there, what our unassigned general fund balance was as of June thirtieth last, and that it was twenty-two point six-two percent of operating expenditures. The board's policy says it will keep fifteen percent and initial three percent on hand, and since June thirtieth, we have done carryforwards and supplemental appropriations using a total of one point nine million in additional fund balance. So after the transfer of the one and a half, we would still have a positive amount above the eighteen percent of five hundred and eighty-two thousand. And this is just going over some of those same numbers.
And we've, I've wrapped this up here. You can see, this is another way of looking at, at really what we're forecasting to, to the budget and the changes, the, the increases, the decreases, and the net. Here's another kind of side-by-side way of looking at the budgets between the fiscal years. Again, back down to a three point three-three percent increase year-over-year. Next slide's another way of, of looking at it as a consolidated budget by function. Finally, I'd like to conclude, I'm there. Finally, um, I'd like to conclude, uh, uh, I'm there, I'm there, I'm there. Certainly, uh, express my, uh, thanks to Glenda. Again, this year, uh, I think she and I work, uh, fabulously together. We both bring our, our, our respective talents, uh, to this process and I think it serves you well, um, her, her capability, absolutely. Also Connie Clark in, in, uh, Glenda's office, uh, did a lot of the heavy lifting, particularly literally with the paper that was involved with the, uh, production. Also, I, I want to take this opportunity to express my thanks to the department heads, constitutional officers, county staff, public schools. This is an orchestra, I mean, these are a lot of pieces in, in this budget that have to come together in what frankly is a pretty, about a three-month timeline to be able to get to tonight. And everybody does their part, absolutely, everybody does their part, the professionalism and the attention to the detail and, uh, I guess the perspective, the realism that everybody comes to the table with, of what they request and what we can actually do. I think, uh, serves this board and serves the taxpayers well. So with that, uh, gentlemen, this is the proposed budget, uh, for fifteen, FY sixteen, fifteen sixteen. I know we have a, uh, work session scheduled, Allison, for Tuesday at, uh, s- five, five P M. So that then we will be in a mode to respond. Unless there are any questions or comments tonight.
My only comment is it's very nice to see things explained in, uh, a layman's term that, uh, is understandable by, I believe, to just about anybody that would pick this document up and read it. I know in the past, it's been one of these things, you look in the Ouija board, uh, trying to figure out what's going on, both from the schools and the county. I'd like to say thank you for making it where we can make sense of it and digest it in our reasonable manner.
I believe Zach put it in American.
Yes.
Well, I've... Excellent presentation.
Yeah, very good presentation. Thank you for all the hard work putting this together. We know this is a tough time and some of the last minute, uh, zingers thrown at you, uh, didn't make it any easier. So I do appreciate your hard work and, uh, we will, uh, we'll look at it and then we'll have some discussions next week.
Anybody else got a comment? Thank you.
We have, uh, one other item, Mr. Chairman, as you know, closed meeting. Prose a motion, uh, that whereas the, to go into closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters: Discussion concerning prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries interested in locating or expanding its facility in the community pursuant to section two point two thirty-seven eleven A five of the Code of Virginia. So that would be my recommended motion.
Do you have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
And a second, all in favor say aye. Motion carries, we'll head into closed session.
adjourn upstairs.
And we'll recess upstairs.
Are we going to recess up there or back down here?
Yeah, we'll have to come back down here.
Yeah, recess upstairs. We adjourn down here.
All right, to the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed or considered in the closed meeting? Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
I'll, I'll then entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye.